And you have my presentation? Sure. Yeah.
Since this is four, we're gonna be on.
So, this was the last.
You need a light?
I think it's going on YouTube.
I think my light is.
Yeah, I can send it to that.
Yep.
I don't remember signing.
Well, we do, because of ten to four is now. Yeah, so, but we have about six hundred. That's next to travel. I would just say.
It's Japan.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Oh, was it?
Really, I wish we'd had more time in Tokyo. But we got lots of stuff.
That's awesome. Well, because it was seventy-five in Tokyo. It's like super.
Yeah, of course.
And then we got Siniseko and it just snowed.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if, you know, questions arise.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's confusion because my exhibit's small.
That's why I went back to your last one.
So you went, oh.
That's the original because of that.
Yeah, so your staff service. It's, it's close.
Yeah, and I reviewed that actually yesterday.
Yeah, I think pretty rich. This, I mean, that's the thing that comments got emails since we haven't done it. But we've really planned, you know, over the last, you know, ten years, put a lot of problems. That's still New York, it's a friend of mine, so. You know, it's, you know, definitely forced by Asian times. So we didn't.
But not three.
Great scare. Oh, I thought that was that. Oh, that guy said, oh, that's the thing, and he's like, they're just fat, honey. They think it's just someone calling you city. And I was just like, send me a map. They have no idea.
That's what I, I responded later, so they'll see.
All right, I haven't checked.
Yeah.
I have to prep, I just talk to it. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First and foremost, the way that this meeting will run smoothly is everybody is polite and gives everyone a chance to speak. If you would like to speak for any part of this, you do need to sign in with your name and address before, just so, just in case anybody missed that. We're gonna start with item number two, approval of the minutes from February seventh, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Would anybody like to make a motion? All motion to approve the minutes from February seventh, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Okay, so right now, we are about to open the public comments section. This is an open comment period for planning and zoning topics which are not related to a discussion item on today's agenda. Request for comments related to agenda items without a public hearing may be considered by the chairperson, that's me. Public hearings are open to public comment during those hearings. Is there anyone here who would like to speak about anything not related to the items on our agenda? Okay, we're gonna move on to item number four, which is the consideration of resolution PZ one zero dash twenty-four, series of twenty twenty-four. And this is a public hearing. So, this is a public hearing on the level for development application for approval of PUD development plan for the properties located at six-two-six and five-five-two Lake Dillon Drive. And also one fifty-three and two twenty-three West Labatte Street, as submitted by Lake Dillon LLC. Following the public hearing, the decision, or the decision before the planning commission will be whether to recommend that the town council approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application. The planning commission also has the alternative option of continuing the hearing should the commission determine additional information is necessary to the commission's decision. The planning commission will follow these procedures in conducting the public hearing. The application must be evaluated under criteria established under the Dillon Municipal Code and other applicable laws. The property, to property, blech, to properly evaluate the application, the planning commission will hear from the applicant, the town staff, the public, and before it decides whether the application should be granted with or without conditions, denied, or a decision to defer until a later date. Everyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. The order of the hearing shall be as follows. The applicant presentation, staff presentation, public comment section regarding, or sorry, reading of any written comments received from the public into the hearing record, applicant rebuttal, response to any of the public comments or questions, final call for questions from the commission, close the public hearing, commissioner's deliberation, potential decision on the application. During the public comment portion of the hearing, members of the public should approach the lectern. Members of the public may speak for up to five minutes each. There's a lot of you here, so please be respectful of your time, I will keep time as well. Please direct your comments to the commission, that's us, not the applicant, the town staff, or other members of the public. You will be asked to state your full name and address for the record and swear to tell the truth. Prior to referring to the agenda item, the planning commission for discussion and action, the chair will also close the public hearing unless the planning commission first adopts a motion to continue the hearing to a future meeting as allowed by law. After the public hearing is closed, no further comment from the applicant or public will be taken. However, the commission may ask for clarification from town staff and for legal advice from the commission's attorney. Does anyone object to the hearing procedures as described? Do we have a proper notification of the hearing?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Are there any commissioner disclosures of potential conflicts of interest or contacts with the applicant, the media, or other interested parties between the time the application was received by the town in tonight's hearing?
So for the record, everyone said no on the commission.
All right, so I will officially open the public hearing at five thirty-five PM on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Will the chair, or sorry, will the applicant please approach the lectern and state your name and address for the record?
Mr. Port, really quickly, will you please swear to tell the truth?
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, you can proceed.
So, yeah, so we. Went through the process of kind of massing on the study. And there were different times where, where I could say, council, Miller is possible, showing drawing, but they're not there yet. But we started working towards a massing to figure out the number of units that we needed and the amount of square footage we needed to create a tax basis for the metro district. We knew that there's gonna be certain amount of public work that we're gonna be doing in the future based on the taxes that we generated on. So, a lot of our basic metrics of what we're trying to form to were designed and thought through at that time in terms of just massing the structure and how many units, basically, we needed for the future work. Like maybe that history just explained that there was, we were trying to incorporate opportunities that we weren't really there yet. This is the norm that we've been waiting, working back to time. So once we get to the next, that's answer being, we then dedicated ourselves. Figuring the town was also something that we. The, there were two opportunities I had, one with a focus group of business owners locally, and one with a group of residents, to get some feedback of some early design. And the feedback that we got was that there were certain sightlines that were important, they would like us to serve. So, we need some pretty significant movements of our building to try to create those sightlines as described. And we also had feedback that from the street level, we wanted to be able to see through and see. And so, we created a lobby that's primarily flat and we elevated that we think you can be at the street level, literally look straight. And that was something that was, that creates some sightlines again that indicate, it's pretty comfortable and small. So I didn't force that, but it was the people that we were able to, that gets the feedback. Another thing that, a couple of things, was some public space. There was a concern from people we spoke to, this becoming something that was exclusive to a group of those that were able to pay and work. So, we wanted to create public spaces that were really important and allowing them to take advantage of these, of the structure that we're creating. And so, we created multiple public spaces elevated in the structure, we created public space that's elevated. We also have a workout app that we created, which is something that's also just. Kind of real birds out to be like that. And so, we, we also had a communication that the more residential, the more, we decided to cap. So, what we tried to do is create, you know, a few units that felt really residential, efficient, even more private. And so, we'll see from that direction through the design, or about where we tried to create that. Fit the character of the top floor that we think that. And finally, and we, we thought, we tried to make the monthly day aesthetic, had a design guideline. And that was pretty painstaking process, select material, looking through different design guidelines, trying to be, probably create something that feels like it's keeping within the town existing aesthetic, but also echo this design intent that described. So, without further, we, we have walked it out.
Thanks, Jay. Storage, storage with more effects appears. These spaces, capital, or as the deeper, or less everything.
Oh.
What's that? Oh, yeah, can, yeah, she'll swear. Yeah.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
And I think this is the package that's available. The narrative here, some of this, of course, I won't just say, sort of reiterate. Side of the narrative, be here tonight, sort of combination, most of us. Nine work, eight work, across a lot of listening. There was a very flattering verb. Within this narrative, we talked a lot about some of the, Jake, the, the two, the design guideline. Big side, aesthetic, as well, and start seeing some of this community here with our element as well, with taking that, necessarily that literal image, but the way. Taking that, using it as inspiration first of all. Taking that, we, I think, all about observation deck, which is part of, Jake, we were talking about it, some public spaces, now we're in the street level, open the building. And then looking at this other pressing. Here, glass, sort of, new elements, pretty. And here in the next, we're just explaining that. You can take it and go, you can see sort of the serrated fashion of the building and the plan, and those are these modules. So, I'm able to read and pull the unit per floor between these modules, and modules everywhere from reading that stories. We talked about it, we saw it, we followed the contour of streets as well as the contour. And now, I'm showing you, well, that's not the whole apartment. So, here we are, sitting basically above the camera here. That is sort of a work on, going through, see that view order to the right. Concern about, kind of, these people that are downwind, they're coming down, they're out towards the way. So we can tell that, by the public space that we have here, and it's almost this public plaza that seats the wider building, it's almost become like a public porch, or was that what you said? For the, to the end of the, you did your computer space, that you had all sorts of events, parts installations, trucks, all part of the event. And then of this sort of large yellow line you see, what about, after we get to see through. Chairs of the resident, you see the lobby, cross the grid that, we'll see. The statistics here, that actually. Units. Within two hundred blocks. It mentioned, so, models are in, we have, up now, and then part of the. That, with them, these. And there's a mix of studio one, two. Get into the. Sightplane here, so to talk about these, how they're, how they're, how they're, and steps, we'll see it step vertically, but what that asks to do is be able to guard areas. The north area is on page, there's large green areas, residential, ground floor, and up, and locate the residential companies on ground floor on the left there, residential. Potentially more residential area of the site, there's a note to the right, there was much larger closet area. We have a pad, station, it's a long way, detail areas, but I shouldn't, I'm walking, sit on, set the spot, and see that. And that's, you know, kind of, see that door, we have. Pretty more of the same as the place we worked. Um, and the plan that we're. Two parting, uh, of this here, exciting, about this nice initial grade. How much snow is piled up in certain areas around current town, that's what we have. This, that's what we're, ground floor. So, the ground floor plan to the right, the green spaces, plaza, this sort of march up, film, towards the top there, we see the local shared, and then the bottom space with the detailed and untamed, like the plazas. And then to the left, we can see residential. There, for. And in the build, going spot, and see the floor that over there. Now, we're just starting, partial of the building, of the area, spaces, on the lobby, as well as retail space, and then start to spot those, that's, that's the degree. Okay, and here, that green area you see to the top, right, that's really where we're coming into the observation, the public observation that had elevated, that we, just had used and opened. Actually, the top floor, I like. That is on the top, so that will, that's going to retail spaces on ground four, and then have to come off of that area, you have to be able to. Make going, you know, while nibbling at something. And then just getting the. Section's here. Site, at pass section, we'll see the two other, so, two, low, blue is representing the residential units, what you see in yellow. So, here, the bottom section that we see, that really represents a section of the building from the top, out to the bottom, that we were stepping down for today, that's also where. Where our section is where we get the bottom of the space. Getting to the elevations and these areas, so what we tried to do, we were talking about. Stories, along, they feel a logical ground floor, the seat will be taller than the potential. So now, we are breaking this up, there's a perfect, we see a space. Spare, does a part of that site, but as well, we're introducing, providing, so, and just break down, that's it. So, the primary material on the interior surface, pump, or, some glass screen, glass screen doors, hyper panel, hyper large panels, varying colors, textures, utilizing some metal elements, and beats, as well as millions of. And then utilize a cast stone, some leather steel, some brown, just for elements, and then you'll see, give some images, very top of building, the older ones that you see, primarily that's the former elements that creates. Just again, talking through the elevation, or elevate. Cost, and then see those again, both, the rest elevation, top elevation, is just a little bit. You can start to see the observation. So, a little more detail, as we're marching down, we're going, so this is the, pretty much at, block fold and filling, you see these little pop cars that are created in front of the, on the floor. We really envision that detail spilling out. Going, see, all happen to the carpet, so, like, going, pop cars, if you're coming down the building, and then addition, in this, from some of these. Use on the exterior, you see the deep over, without, or, stop it, and then while we have. Some conferences, there's, again, we have. Next slide, consider, just really be talking through the building, box, the specific, they, streets, and we're talking about the tension, or ready, we're going lower. And if you look at the end, pretty good, you can see that, right, sure. So this one here, and straight down, you can see the retail. Also, that very, to tell you that public looks are. Looking up, we're going, the sightline.
We send mailings to all property owners with configured need. That's the bill on the tour setup. Uh, we posted the site for posters on tour setup as well. Uh, the legal notice uh, we had to do a paper on. And um, the code has some interesting criteria that it that uh, we cannot um. Be made from and that's not less than seven days and not. Being you know, heavily um residential. Far left here is where that uh, main private. Off history. That grade that. There's uh, defenses on that ground level. It's being placed. Group top needs based. Then as we scroll around site, you can see the pool in the middle there. The uh, retail and these this knee side of the structure that. Paris. Obviously they would refer to and that is uh. Go on. Big way there. Not only by that. We go down like Dylan Brown. But also. Expend with some sort of public space that he. Just the projects that this this kind of outlines um. What's being proposed here, there's there's um studio units, there's one bedroom units. One plus bedroom. Um, then the two bedroom units. Two bed plus ten then. So in total currently um, they're showing two hundred um, units. The value is different uh, the breakdown of different units for the code. Studio and one bedroom units for the code require one point five. There's three studio and a hundred and six one bedroom. There the the code parking required based on the code. Uh, then we look further down uh, two bedroom. Any one of those units, three bedroom showing ten. There is some conversation that that's a three in a brand, that's a. Brand is like a. Bedroom mix might change up. And the park space is for the retail and restaurant. So we come up with total amount of parking required of. Eighty one. Spaces. They always round up when we're talking about parking. So if you look back at the project statistics on this page, they're showing. Dynamite. Now what I can tell you, the way we do this on product is that. Hundred percent of the residential will be parked on site. To my title of important living spot here. We aren't talking about like family living. Three bedroom units. Talking about um. Visitors that um collect the wind out of the year out of that hotel. And then um deliver visitor. So it is a little. Uh, so if we consider the transient model. Still much hotel party. The amount of parking required. It's very very reduced. We get down to. Um, so again, that's not how it operates, but it is worth um considering. Parking is not. To bring this board. Kind of an idea. It's not in the resolution as it stands currently. We don't have specific standards in our code. But I think it's worthy of consideration, especially this type of product. Has has all that detail, has the restaurants, has that public space. Maybe there's some sort of application that should might consider um. Possibly. Estimates or. So I I just. For me. So part of this P V. Even though it's in the residential high zone district. Because of its proximity to. Amphitheater. And the town center. Square area zone district. Off square areas on district. After corner across the street. Brian's building. Square area. On the applicant divisions, this is being part of. A little space. And who appeals that fine square area zoning might be. Part of their requesting. These don't say they're just taking a stat out of. Not actually requesting. So the typical um residential height are R H zone setbacks. We call them guards in our code. Front guard is twenty feet, side guard ten, street side guard twenty and rear yards. Uh, the proposed guards again, they're they're seeking uh. Slight deviation in code and. Relation for. Finding. Setbacks. However. Side. There is a blue dash line. Certain navigating. That that is actually reflecting the R H. I think that's worthy of. Because uh, what they have proposing here at grade is in general compliance with. R H zone. I think that they work really hard to try to offer their project. Against the U J's residential developments. Square area zone in fact, um, very clear requirement to have a deep eye for. Upper landscape on the two of those that probably they have shown that but.
So at ground level though. It it meets the setback distance requirement. Just pointing it out that.
That's a good.
Yep, yep, yep.
The typical yard. Where um, we have, we have a lot of. Um, so at grade you see is this this buffer area just looking at that. Southwest corner of this west rain um. Thirty thirty four feet in one direction and almost twenty nine. So. Grade a nice proper. Meeting that. West bench setback. On the off on grade, at grade, it's also meeting that. Um, that structure does have that pinch point there in the corner um. That sub rainy garage does give. About. That deep.
Nothing else goes.
I just.
More than trash being a little rare.
Yeah.
Hey, for the sake of uh, disorganization and the sanctity of the hearing procedures that were read at the beginning, let's hold off on public comment. And questions until the appropriate time. Yeah. No, totally understood.
See here at the. Here, that's kind of the overhang. Foundation actually. Slide. Go to that. Setback really creates interest. And now we'll dive into building height. Uh, the code is pretty. Quite specific as to how. How it is to calculate building height. Essentially, we take the high um point of foundation contact location. Uh, with existing grade and load point. And we determine a lead for that. For that um, for a median. Uh, we can get this average median and then um, that helps us determine our place of age. So it's essentially a location in the center of the. Site. Similarly, on the southwest building base, which we. Centered with on the adjacent. Five on many. Uh, we get a. Well, it's. This degree um. Proximate. From that. Southeast corner of the restaurant is also set down stories. Uh, we've got there is um. Open space divided on this development. There's a public game private space, so there's the observation tower. Um, outdoor dining and that entire big bell plaza. Top restaurant. Uh, we're dying. There's a. Private pool. Seating. Lots of open space there. There's also a private group top. That's on the southwest corner. Just like that's where it really is and stuff like that. Looking at this thing. Well, then um. Most units have balconies or radials. Um, just some views that. Could be. Showing. Can't use the pool and. And that at one level. Center of the building. Massively. Highly valuable space, so. Private. Paris. In public. Restaurants. Yeah, that. Sideboard plaza. For seventy feet of setback in the corner. Going by. Plus the Dante Street. And say eight minutes on outdoor dining. It's true of city was then ever in trades. They are showing landscaping. Some landscaping on the terrace. Hey, it shows the um, the fire, water and sewer gap. For this development. Um, we call it D P Rs, that's potentially a. Only three way. Home, three bedroom. The one E P R is one three bedroom. We look at apartments or condominium units, they're less than eight. Three bedroom baths, so we have these different combinations for. Two bedroom. For the twos, the bedroom. Eight five. Thinking of. And makes these dwellings. Three bedrooms greater than three. We've gone through the analysis of. Thanks for your help with this, greatly appreciate it. Um, made it up that the total required. For this development, given the thirty three or so credits available, given current development. About a hundred and fifty eight. So the the town is currently doing a capacity study. Been working on that about a year now. On that network that's getting close to being completed. We currently have approximately seven hundred, just under seven hundred and two Rs. In in the J S A, J S A. The potential project that may come online, hopefully will. Um, yeah, about seventy. Cars that appear to that. So we're talking about another hundred and. Say. Three eight year. So we're still. We're only talking about a third of what what we have. We have more, so. Uh, important to note. Um, I know with all of you all earlier, that find your fifth one. Um, actual workforce housing project in U S. Service. Space. We're partnering with county, another private developer. Try to. Take that workforce housing project. As we negotiated how that could be. County has been able to find sewage service through the Dillon Valley. That means that they will divert. Facewater from down into the valley. Lives large. To the Dillon Valley. There at J S A. The advantage there is sure the town by poverty that. It's not the duck. Just trying. Help you all understand that a little bit. Um. We're currently planning a. Popper plan extension, which will give us up to um, approximately. Seven, yes, that's. Second. The intent here was to create um, a unified appearance, what what we anticipate signs might look like. What's the sign band location that's the. Installation location. Whether the anticipated desire to. That part of. I think was accurate. And that's what we do with a little bit of that. Trails. They do usually. Lot of. That that view all the way through. I think. One thing stands out. Um, the architect developer heard. They spoke. That people order down like Dylan Brown. Somehow to not have massive wall. That I can through. About four or eighty parking spaces. That's. And we're talking about two hundred residential units. And some retail spaces. The traffic engineer is still working on the traffic study and. All we have currently is a fifth generation of. I estimate the current trips are on the order of a hundred. Site trips per week. Average weekday, excuse me. And then they're estimating that it'll get upwards to nine hundred. Two thousand more trips. Per day. Now, when we look at the proposed retail and restaurants. And branded residential product. We've heard that people, this isn't your typical strip mall. Restaurant. So a lot of the shopping. Issues. Presence of the bug shop. A lot of people shopping. That means the traffic engineer needs to make that determination. That's a favorable. At Lake Dillon Drive view. A lot of view. At the next image there. When they first took a look at this, okay, how many units did Jake describe? How many units do? So the structure looking like. First came out is, hey, here's the box. We're going to take it all the way to the Lake Dillon Drive setback. See what it looks like. Completely obstructed that view down. They heard the feedback on that being back with something fucking more like that. Next image. It's taken from the northernmost. You know, if you go. And it looks like off course, there's the hotel. And you can see the trees and the right up to the hotel there. Right. Those are about. Correctly, where it is about where the. So sharing this image with you that that view. Hey. A million. And actually, essentially. Based on our calculations for the code, we've got. Parking space short. Although required one percent of residential people fight on site. The two percent of the. 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 Space. It's application, we always need to consider our guiding document. Our concrete. Who you all are very well involved with. We've been working on. In this body for almost two years. We will continue to use that. Update. That being said, what we heard in that process from the public is that they love the water. Love the views from the lake shore. Love the. And lots of shop, retail shop. Restaurants and bars that make it a memorable. Place. People would say, oh, so much going on. That's so much going. Seven percent. This project actually brings some revitalization. Again, just pulling out from the contract. There is a desire expressed in the contract to extend speed. Especially in the town center area. And that's helping have those one lodges provide business. Buy those shops, those restaurants. Contract recognizes that Dillon's a residential resort. We have much to offer here. It also recognizes the importance of planning to allow growth, residential elements. Satisfy the needs and allow. Those. This project brings a certain level of residential use. We have. Cascading amount of types. And we're also trying to increase the amount of. We find the innovative residential land use purchase should be considered. Locate retail service, partial and higher density. Here. This thing. We have a summit stage that there that runs around area zone. So that's stop. Yeah. Is our guiding document. Given that, considering what the contract says, that this project, which it brings up to the town. Town staff is. Looking to apply staff recommendation.
Okay. Do any of the commission board members have questions of the applicant or town planner? I know I have a few. Anyone want to go first?
Go ahead, Jer.
All right. My first question was answered. My second question, is there going to be any heated driveways or walkways within the structure? With this business model, are these units going to require short-term rental licenses? Okay. So it's not like a traditional hotel. All right. I will make a recommendation just based off of previous applicants that you take into consideration with the parking. Potential, if you can put it in there, consideration for employees of the businesses that will be working in these establishments. You know, those people are there for most of the day, maybe not the night, but the restaurants could filter in with some of those spots. But I feel like that's usually a blind spot for a lot of developers here. And we do have busy times that last months long. And I'm sure this will come with the planning, but if it's possible to create some sort of drainage. Plan or look at the way that the water and snow will melt off of the building. That's often an issue, a lot of buildings here in this county and this environment. And so I don't want to see your landscaping get destroyed. Thank you. That's all the questions I had at the moment.
I had a few as well. I'll kind of go off the parking. Will there be permits for the residential parking? So I'm just trying to figure out how will the residential units be guaranteed parking spaces? So like if retail is coming in or say, you know, I'm thinking, for example, there's a concert at the lake, at the amphitheater. And you have. They want to use the retail. I don't know if you're going to get like a two-hour pass or if it's paid parking or however. So just explanation how that's going to work, because what if they stay and then there's a ton of people that park there for a concert? And then you have residents that don't have parking. And like the parking underneath, is that connected in any way? Or like, is there going to be a separate, like, okay, this, there's a parking area specifically for, you know, some of the underground parking. Specifically for the residences or can like people come down and I'm going to go park over in this residential area?
So we're going to. Extend that.
And then something I noticed was, you know, you mentioned there will be heated. Porch area and then heated other heated areas. I noticed that the proposed snow storage will be on top of the proposed landscaping. So how do you? How's that going to work? I would definitely not. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I would definitely not, I've seen that. And trees don't live. Definitely agree with the bike racks. And then with the traffic study, if there is a. If there is a. I think I saw the condition, correct me if I'm wrong, that said like that a traffic study would need to be submitted. But what if it's submitted and it's not, you know, it's over this threshold or is there a specific threshold that we want to stick to? In case something comes back, because I noticed in the staff report, there was, you know, there was, there's thoughts of that it was either overestimated or underestimated due to. You know, some of the, you know, the residences that will be there. So how will that be? Figured out, you know, if something comes in later after approval.
Suzanne, if I might just real quick ask the members of the public, are you able to hear okay? Especially when the applicant is responding to questions. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, my voice doesn't project. I think that is all the questions I have. Thank you.
I've got a couple. So the setbacks that we do or do not meet the RH zone standard. That great. In my. Do meet the RH standards. Excellent. Yep. So this thing's going to have a big old flat roof on it. And from what I could see. You intend to drain melting snow through interior drainage in some manner? Does that? Any plan for heated elements, heat tank or? Okay. Great. And then last one was just any comment on your intended timeline. For, you know, so you got a green light here, town council gives you a green light on. How, what duration of plan? And I know it's an unfair question, but. Going to ask it. So that's breaking ground and starting. What kind of an endpoint?
What's the difference in units that you could have in the structure if you adhered to the thirty-five foot limit versus the limit you're proposing there? Do you know, have a sense off the top of your head? Yeah. Yeah? Yeah, so, so I understand that. And so you're, what I, what you're saying is, if you, we don't sort of allow the change in heights, then you would want a larger building with more. Yeah, to make the math work. Yeah. Do we have a sense of how much additional light will be generated by this building over the buildings that are there now? Does the, it looked like that rooftop mechanical mesh blocking, I'm not sure exactly what the right term is. Yeah, screen sort of, was slightly in the line of sight of the watchtower? Is that the case, or is it totally out of the way and won't see it? How is, how's the public access to that tower enforced? I'm not sure if this is a question for you guys or net, right? But so, you know, I think it's very admirable that the plan accounts for public access to these spaces. How does that actually work, like, in perpetuity? That's for me. Thank you.
And with these equivalent residential unit ratings relative to the water, you know, it sounds like you're confident that there's still plenty to go around, even if you didn't complete the Uptown 240 project and complete this project, right?
Yes, that's the opinion of the public works.
I know, in this body, over the last five, six months, we've discussed heavily, you know, the state legislative initiative that's been bouncing around relative to mandatory increase of density for any new development projects, where that is in the legislative process. I don't even know anymore. Nonetheless, I mean, it's public works, and everybody else considered the fact that Governor Polis may start requiring us for any new developments to start increasing density over what code provides for presently, and then all of a sudden, Straight Creek is no longer, you know, as viable a water option. The town. I'm struggling a little bit with, yeah, okay, we're considering these residential. These will be deeded individual condominium units, you know, going to somebody, C or their trust, or whatever the case may be. But ultimately, this is a hotel, right? You know, I get that we can structure it that way, but you know, I know there have been other developers here in town that had to go through more of a rezoning process just to, you know, this level of getting a PUD put together. And it's, I thought you mentioned something about, you know, comprehensive plans intended to increase, you know, workforce housing, those kinds of things. I don't see how this furthers that. Sir, I have a question. This is my time, thank you. So I don't know, I'm just, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the look of that. I don't know that I necessarily need a response. I just wanted to put it out there. You know, ultimately, our job on this body is to determine whether or not, you know, I mean, we're quasi-judicial, right? Whether or not it fits the nature of the town is ultimately up to town council's side. We have to determine whether or not the PUD necessarily, you know, serves the plan, serves the planning and zoning commission's goals. And I struggled with that last aspect of it. Ultimately, I don't know that it's necessarily going to have effect on my vote one way or the other. You know, our job is to figure out whether or not PUD serves the code as, you know, within our bounds and governed or by statutes. I don't have anything else. I understand, and I know from the discussions that I've heard previously is that, you know, there's potential for workforce housing to be put in up near the movie theater, maybe down the road. I'm not sure if that, it sounds, it sounds like the owner of the movie theater wasn't necessarily on board with that for whatever reason. Nonetheless, I understand this thing worked in there, but just the structure of this is, you're getting there in a roundabout way. And I understand that you have the financing agreements to get up with and, you know, ensure that you put together the correct utilities as are required by those agreements that you have, the IGAs that you have with town. But it's just that, I just want to make it known, not a huge fan of that. I understand you're hamstrung by it.
May I just say something really quickly, for the benefit of everyone in the room? You know, this is a land use hearing, and I think that the discussion that's happening right now is relevant to the fact that this, the commission has to make a finding in order to recommend approval, that this comports with the comprehensive plan. So I do think this is a relevant discussion, but I'll just remind you that the commission is ultimately bound by the criteria in the code for making its decision tonight. So while some things might come out in testimony and questions tonight, they might not be ultimately relevant to the commission's decision this evening. So just wanted to caveat that, and please carry on.
Nothing left for me. Thank you.
Okay, since we have a lot of people here who are eager to make their comments, would it be more beneficial to go through the sign-in sheet for organization structure?
For public comment?
Yeah, before I open it.
Yeah, well, so before you open the public comment?
Yeah.
I think you would start, you can open the public comment section and then start with the list, and then if there are others that want to comment, they can.
Okay. If anyone has not signed in and would like to make a comment, please sign in, sign your name and address on the form. There's multiple forms, maybe we can bring them up later. All right, I will now open the public comment portion of the public meeting. Members of the public desired to speak should approach the lectern and may speak for up to five minutes. I will keep time. Before you, if you have not signed in, please additionally sign in. And I would also like to ask the members of the public to direct all questions to this committee and not directly to the applicant. The applicant will have a chance to answer any questions after all of the public comments have been made and it is closed. And they will be keeping track of all of your comments. They're all necessary and valid. I will also ask members of the public to direct all their questions and comments to this particular project, so that we can help move this along quickly. All right. And then for each of you, I will also ask you to state your name and address, and ask you if you intend to tell the truth, or swear to tell the truth, and you may proceed. We're going to start with Ken Leach. Awesome. Do you swear to tell the truth? All right, please proceed. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Julie Workman. Thank you. All right, next up we have Dawn Wilson. Oh, sorry, do you swear to tell the truth?
For these three years, we take work at how we put there. So when I look backwards, it looks good. I'm really concerned for West Bay East. And I'm concerned about basically right next to us where we have parking lots and a lot of open space. That basically we're now driving into trash and the retail areas being taken care of. I'm also quite concerned about quality of life. As you'll see, how it changed in our community. Basically, I see a very large impact. But I also want to state that I'm not against development, but the sale of the property. I'm just really worried about if you look at the 25-foot setback down how we sit there, we look really cramped in. And when I take a look at the visuals they put up there, it concerns me also. It's just basically a big block over there. We don't really see what it's going to do for us. Additionally, there are other things that are coming with it, but of course, we're concerned about the property. 27-month destruction period is also a major concern. I'm not sure how we mitigate that and you keep with it. One of the things that you also see as the best question is that I think you said there was 60% land usage, including parking lots. Take parking lots, like, I think we're more like 60%, 30%. Can you take a look at that? We've been very lucky and safe because that's what hasn't developed. Parking lots, they have to be easy to do and fast. But basically, I think like a lot of people, I'm not against the hotel per se, but I'm against something that when we take a look at the view there, kind of just. That's the main things that I see. Bill, time is important, the alarms, these types of things. And also, the thing that concerns me is that we all end up with a problem up here in our backyard. But I think that's one that if we're doing it as residential, it's not really that. In my opinion, which covers the taxing, which is very important, if that's what we're going to do, we need to decide over and do there. And I also just want to ask, is there anybody else here? Okay, because we had a little bit of a problem getting organized, it was a personal problem again on HOA. That's there, so that's also important right now to that. I've learned a lot. I just saw packages on Friday. I must say, it's been organized very well. I thought the review was. And again, honestly, I'm not against developing, but I'm really concerned about the way we look squeezed in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Chuck Savage.
Mr. Saval, that I think was fine, but just remember to direct your comments to the commission.
Are you getting this information? I'm going to set some stuff for folks to read here. Just when this was put on Facebook yesterday, I read some news, but there were quite a few comments, so I have to make. 95% of the comments are against it. 95% people comment. All of them are against it. Let's just put on the list that people can hear some of us. You learn your condos that I'll sit and settle in. Yes, Dylan in the county don't want to welcome the people here. Some of them will tumble through the ground. Jake Corret, it's not a model, he's from the US, can pound sand, so can Dylan Towne. This is literally the most disgusting show of wealth I have seen. These are all different people. They want to make it as ugly as they made Silver Dollar. Don't worry about voicing your opinion in town council, because they have votes to pass. Your voice won't knock you listening. That's the confidence people have in spite of being not here. A lot of you have other things to do.
Please, stop. You guys know the rules, right? We've said them a number of times.
Looks like Denver, Indianapolis, Baltimore, Chicago. Stop over development in Colorado. Perfect. Keeps with the full destruction of our county that are already allowed. Imagine if the town council was listening to their constituents. This looks like a Chiderick Creek strip mall. And lacking character. Welcome to Porretville. Wow, this is the, this is a lot of affordable housing, isn't it? This is a joke, right? This town has no heart. He building it until it's bigger, the biggest city in the mouth. Look out for this, so Porret's coming for you. This makes me sick. 95% of the comments. So I think that before another dime spent, another minute spent, this should be voted by the people that live in. This is not, this is a representative body. It's not what you guys want. It's not what the town council wants. By the way, are any of them here?
They're not allowed to be here.
So it's not the town council. It's what these people, and the only way to find out what they want, to think this whole thing, where everybody can see it and put it on a ballot. That's where it falls. You guys follow these, you know, new word we created, transient residential units. That means short-term rent. The entire state and the county, everybody knows we're talking short-term rent. They're taking away housing from workers. We have a huge employee housing problem that we own partners in every city we pay. This does not help that up. This takes away housing from people that have 2,000 trips a day added to what we have, the mess that we have when we have events in Dillon already. And you're going to add that many cars, that much back with no plan? Even if you don't have a plan yet, let's go ahead and prove this.
You have one minute.
My point is, the town council hasn't listened to the citizens. They say they have, they put a bunch of crap up here, but they haven't asked the citizens, and the only way to find out is without a ballot, right? I would like to propose this supportive ballot, and I would like to encourage that for now, you do not.
Thank you.
Allison. May I make a statement? So I just want to clarify for everyone that the commission has to decide the application before it this evening and there's no option in the land use process, which we're now entered into with this hearing. And prior to that, with the submission of the application to refer this item to the voters. So that is a legal thing. There's nothing any of us can do to change that. Second, there were lots of, in that last statement, hearsay accounts that were presented. The veracity of those statements cannot be verified by the condition, the commission this evening, the social media quotes that is. But the commission doesn't prohibit hearsay evidence and that's why it was allowed to be said. So the commission will evaluate the weight that it will give to that testimony tonight, knowing that it was made by unnamed folks on social media who make up. You are, you are, that is okay for you to do and it will be treated the same way that I'm explaining right now. Yeah, that's, that, okay, yeah, that's fine. Yep, you can offer it right now if you'd like to approach the town planner, Mr. Saval. All right, so that's being offered for evidence and I think my advice would be the commission, the chair has to decide whether to admit that. My advice would be to admit it with the qualifier that it is hearsay evidence. But in that the commission can determine the weight that it gives to that evidence. So it's your, ultimately your decision though as a chair.
I'll allow them to be entered in while those comments may not affect our decision tonight. I think it's important that town council hears them, whether those people are present or not, or citizens of the town of Dillon. It is a community forum and people have the right to speak their mind and it's been entered here in the record. So it's for town council to consider.
Time lapse. Typically, Mr. Saval, if it's going to be very brief, okay. So, oh, I don't think that's at all true. Yep. This is how traditional land use processes are, are conducted and this is the town's process to sign the books in that the planning commission is required to follow by law.
And I remind you that any decision that we make tonight is not a final decision. It is just a recommendation to town council, which is what we do with all things that come before us. All right, next up is Tim and Andrea Messino. Please state your names. And please state your names.
We're saying decisions made that we can't question how it should be there. It's like, this is the development.
No, you can, you can make a comment, but I'm not gonna, I did not say that. Yeah, okay.
So I'm just concerned as to, based on zoning and that particular area, why you cannot build like five several buildings and put these strict people in as humans? I don't understand.
Is there something in the zoning because it doesn't sound today that's a residential and not a termless or a floor type of house?
I just want to make something clear for members of the public. I am the town attorney and the attorney for the commission, so these are the decision makers. So, yeah, yeah, and just to clarify, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Ultimately.
Of course.
Ultimately, what is going to go on to this property depends on what the developers, the owners of the dirt want to do. Certainly, there may be some opportunity, you know, to make something look more like what you want it to look like. But that's not what this commission has been presented with today. Our job is to take the materials that have been given to us, review those materials, ensure that they comply with the code, which includes a provision to have a planned unit development, which allows for slight variances to the code for specific projects. It's also statutorily prescribed under the Colorado revised statutes that every, you know, town code relative to planning and zoning has the ability to do this. So the short answer to your question is yes, that is feasible if the developer were to come to us. But that's not what we're looking at. You know, I thought I tried to make it somewhat clear. Our job is to find out with whether or not what the Port group has put together satisfies the code and any kind of variance that we can make relative to a planned unit development application. The next thing is their financing mechanism. It's a vehicle to get it done. It does share tax revenue. You did hear from Mr. Port that ultimately, depending upon what the state of Colorado does with short-term rentals, it could present a problem down the road to where those tax revenues are no longer there and the town doesn't make as much money. But the point being that it's, it's, it's ultimately, we have to make a decision on what the paperwork that is in front of us. And I think I said it earlier. If you don't like the nature and the character of the development, that's not for this body. That's for the town council. So our job is to, like I said, is quasi judicial branch of, you know, analysis to figure out whether or not this makes sense based on the way the code works. If you don't like it, you need to let your council people know. We're not politicians.
Also, they have to be made clear, most people, how that works.
Sure.
Also, personally, we're concerned about the town, how they're trying to make this the town. It seems like that's going to take away from the other all small business.
I think that then goes again to the nature and character of development relative to the rest of the town, which is a question better posed to the town council, not to the town. We're, we don't have a dog in the fight. We just have to determine whether or not the application as submitted meets the requirements of the code.
And in the comments, I would just like to state the two years, seven months of development does cause me concern given that we have uptown 240 sitting there looking like a horrible eyesore. Now we're going to start something else. Yeah, part rental, that could be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Philip. Right? Yeah. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yeah, it's making me kind of shift my presentation because how do I convince you that what you're saying is, yeah, we can work with it. But as I see it, in order for this to be built, you're introducing chaos. And that chaos is due to all these variants, whether it is the height variance. I mean, we're building any residence. You know, you don't even look at, you don't have to look at the lake. You want to look at the mountains too. There's a mountain range there, but they won't be able to see it because of this building. You're introducing traffic chaos. You think about the trash truck that has the back end of this alleyway down into the parking garage. It's a bad network. You've got the number of dumpsters, you've got laundry trucks, the laundry, you've got food trucks. And that might be the goal of the comprehensive plan if you've got these food trucks. You've got food trucks delivering stuff to the restaurant. You've got chaos with employee parking. I think that's a great point. Is that this is just not, like, when you have to assign it where you have parking spots, they're certainly not residential. You've got also account for employees that make this a luxury place. You want the bays, you want to go into that nice parking area, something open. Cool, they have parking for that. So we, so we went forward too, but I think this whole, we're going to be fine. I go to council meeting, all they're concerned about is parking. But here we are saying, oh, we've got, we've got 10 extra, we've got two. Break it off. We got noise chaos. Can you imagine outdoor terraces, pool, park areas, outdoor bars? What are we going to introduce for music? We have to listen to the empty theater noise, which is blown out of the worst part of the vision there. And then, and they put 28 years. And when I think of the concentration of chaos in that corner, let him do it. And what is being introduced here? Just unfit. But trying to stay within what town buys responsibility for tonight is, but by saying this is okay. You're just reliving the council and saying, this is what we want? The council wants this. And I have been in front of the council twice now. And they've sat and I've said. And so this is the primary estate. We also have light gates. They did a great job with the parking lot that was for the. Our unit was right over the marina. And there is very good light. So when I look at the sign, the. Anything else where, you know, the ambient light from the pool, you've got the bar, you have outside ice stairs, people hanging out there. You've got the observation deck. Outside there. It is difficult to present. I'm trying to look at the responsibility. And that is. It seems like there's just a lot of things that we're having to change. In order to accommodate this, which you wouldn't have to do if we built this big. I guess the best that you'll go there. Really focused. If I could introduce hearsay, but the people I've talked to have always pointed that, say, thanks to town. That is really where something like this.
You have one minute.
I'm gonna end it there.
Thank you. Alright, next we have Ken Leach. Okay, um, next we have Wesley Lang. Oh, wait, do you swear?
Yeah.
We, they can respond later.
Well, yeah, I mean, there is a time for the applicant to respond after all of the public comments go. But if it's as simple as a yes or no, I mean, that's appropriate too.
You can figure it out. You asked about short term rental license fee requirement. It's not a hotel. We have a hotel that doesn't park these short. To make this work, you're saying if you want a unit guaranteed, there's short term license issued. And town is already operating a limited short term license that it out every year. I don't think how that's fair. And that parking, everybody's considering that parking, that's not good. Two spots off the little underestimated, already talked about moving a couple of spots for the ice parking there, limited that. And a proposal was to use existing public parking that's limited parking hours with the parking lot. And theater parking. Pose fourteen votes retail. Retail, that's a lot of people coming go. He said the residents will have a key box to come and go, but I hope the general public wants to come use the general public facility. If I'm gonna take it, the park before you go into the viewing area of the park.
Yeah, oh, yeah, please direct all questions here. Okay, and just to reiterate, there is no guarantee for short term rental licenses. Yeah, that's something that they'll have to work out with the town. Once this is approved.
And just, just one added item of clarification. There is no limit on the short term licenses that the town council has that the town will issue. But it doesn't apply within the Dillon town limits.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Kate Wyatt. What? Buddy? Next up is, uh. Charles, no, Luke. Thank you.
So public rent equivalent home comments. As a fellow resident over since nineteen, two thousand, representing works in Dillon. And the major concern is the, that everything that's going to happen next. I know that the. The design has a setback. But it's really a driveway, it's the driveway where all of the services are gonna. As mentioned, that means the trash trucks, that means the delivery. That means all hours of night, which probably going to be silos and trucks and the backing right next to all of the. Let's make. And so thinking about what an offset that setbacks is intended. To me, it does not fit additional driveway and setback, considering the company that I really like this group. Consider not fitting the. Huge impact on for those of us who live. And also want to share my concerns about size and scope of what is going to be next to that building. And is it seeds? I don't know if that are required. That's going to have a major impact for those of us who are like. One question for this group, does the current hotel? Have any impact on the future proposed license? The back table? If there's any grandfathering of what's currently there based on what's.
What was the question?
Well, since it's currently a hotel, is there any consideration that we're proposing for that space or is it, is the intent to equal the residential?
Well, so it's not going to be rezoned. This is a request for a variance from the residential zoning. It sits right now, right? And that you may be able to speak to this better than I can, but ultimately, the use of those properties right now, to me, seem nonperforming. So were they grandfathered in sometime in the past?
I can speak to that. They went through what was back in the day called a special review process. Which is essentially our conditional use process. Currently in the residential high zone. You can construct a new hotel through a conditional use approval process. That being said, there was no grandfathering of the current use compared to a redevelopment project. It was felt that the prior approval through the special permitting process applied specifically to the product that's on the ground now. And that a total redevelopment project would require a new process, whether that be a PUD or some other process.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then another question I had is whether preventing conditioning or consideration of all these that the town is operating.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Eric Taylor. Please state your name and address as well.
Take away this. You swear. Tell me you swear. The ones that are locked, I'm watching, they're, they're stopping for their, so they're running. These buildings, you're gonna throw a five story plus eight feet. That's, you're making a huge. We don't have. Don't have their complete attention. We follow them, watch. They get the leg out to the side of driving in front of them. They have to take the way before. White and tall should not be any there just a residential. I can see very many feet. They will coordinate not more than fifty five feet. Plus a sixty three feet, you have a double. That's a fifty seven percent increase. It's not a minor increase. Am I just saying, well, we could consider minor guarantees. People just. Fifty five percent increase, fifty seven percent. Thirty five feet. A sixty three feet. And so they're, they're building. The short term. In all the restaurants. And then you have to like you talk. So that problem that we have. The variants, giving the variants, make this part of the core area. It's not part of. Core areas, getting. They had a post office across the way. That's not part of. Black grid across the way. That's not part of the area. They got one, and I remember I can use that. That's not part of the area. Only if the core area. They want to use all these. They want to pull all the, so we can come core area. For this. I don't understand why we're gonna. Should be smaller than anything. Yeah. I can show you the view, there's, there's. This is the box. That building is gonna be up the bottom. They can see all of one floor. This building over there, they're not seeing. And if you order that headship. From the north end of the building. You show, well, they can see the light. Yeah, they're looking over parking lot. It has sparse trees, rich short trees. They're not the school wide street like they're showing here. So putting in lots, putting in pine tree. And deciduous trees, sparse trees there, that's gonna block the people coming in. So he said that's totally. His pine and deciduous trees, that we, that we consider not allow there. We show trees, shrub. They, they need to escape. So they don't have usually just some. So I, I think we should not, we should not approve this. Because they're asking way too much. They never acted. It should be, should be, they have to be shorter and wider. But, but it be. I don't think the little view quarter down the hill, right down the line, real wide. Between the building and trees. Not much you, you're not getting, you're not getting.
You have one minute.
They don't sell themselves for two hundred dollars and I don't know what they're saying.
Thank you. Um, so for the sign in sheets, those are all the names I have. Is there another sheet? Did anyone else want to make a comment? Does it need to sign in?
Um, that's, you can go up and make your comment, but we would like you to sign the sheet just so we have it for the record.
Uh, please say your name, address, and if you swear to tell the truth. Thank you. And just state your address for the record as well. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Um, typically, the commission does not allow public members of the public to make two comments.
Oh, do you swear? Do you swear to tell the truth? Thank you.
Allison, will you save the amount of time left?
Uh, it's two minutes.
Two minutes left. Mr. Wyman submitted a letter as well, and we need to include that letter in the overall time of the comment. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. So long as there's no one else that wants to speak.
Is that right? Anyone else that would like to make a comment? Oh.
Yeah, well, um, let's.
Yeah. Please state your name, address, and do swear to tell the truth.
Yes, I, I, I have a change. Uh, the work for people. Want to see, it needs to want to see. You know, the revitalization. There is a planning phase of that in one season. It comes down to logistics of. Way far. I can't. What you. We're talking to. What, and a carrot, it's a way of parking for a residential parking. We did have. Really want to get that shut. And, and sometimes. It can be traffic, traffic flow that got things. What I see. Plus, and that. Service. People all tend to want. Lot of factors funding, building, after place. It's moving there. Now, what we've seen with the offer hotel still not built. That's something that is a plan we say. Think before we go and consider something as large as this. These little things.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to make a comment? Please state your name, address, and if you swear to tell the truth. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment during this time?
I'm sure, can I make a motion to incorporate all the written comments that we received for the hearing into the record?
Yes, that's, uh, next.
Huh?
That's next on the agenda.
Okay. Can I make that motion?
Yeah.
I'm so moved.
So moved.
Second.
On favor? Aye.
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 All right. Um, so did the town receive any written comments from interested members of the public? And if so, will you, do you want me to read them in?
No, we just incorporated.
Yeah, we'll incorporate them, and, yeah, just so everyone's clear, there were some comments received ahead of time, and the planning commission has had an opportunity to review those. Um, it's been moved and seconded, and the motion has been approved. That these be included in the hearing record, which means they will be included in the materials included, um, in the council pack. Well, um, so the council will not see the meeting recording itself. Um, that is being recorded, but they won't see it. They have to look at everything anew. Um, so while they'll receive, um, comments that were included in the, in the package, um, in the packet, um, and what was admitted in the evidence, um, they will not see.
I, I'm about to let.
Okay.
So, what we said is that.
Uh, yes, it is, absolutely. Yes, yeah, so. Yeah, we can talk offline about how you might obtain.
Great. So are there any additional public comments? All right, there's one. Oh, all right. Please state your name, address, and if you swear to tell the truth.
But, um, you said this evening, they heard. Council. They should. They can do.
Yep. Okay, are there any additional public comments? Uh, we, you're really only allowed to make a comment once. If you have additional comments, you could direct them to town council. Uh, nope, nope. Uh-uh, nope. Would anyone besides Ken like to say anything? Okay. All right, well, hearing none, I now close the public comment portions of the public hearing at eight oh four P M. Okay, does the applicant wish to respond or submit additional evidence in response to any testimony or evidence offered by the town planner or members of the public, including written public comments? Cool.
Um, so part of the challenge, why you see. But you have. So, you know, you got to call a screen. Trying to find a parking space, if you want to be running experience. And so we're going to be creating our. Um, not only. With the metro district. Have a creation. So that that part. Sort of. But those. Pretty. Um, and we need. Entire bodies. Of support. Um, we, you know, in terms of this. It's like, again, the. When we made. Creation of that. The intent is to open up that. Open up. Um, kind of. That's the. There's been a lot of. Even. So. This is just, I mean. So. You know, the, you want. Very good. That's the string. They put in the contract. And you're, but you're. People have been saying, only. They want to. Do. The home. Or the factory. Yeah. Because you can't visit yourself. That there's those. People like. So you're not. Like those. Four. Oh. There's. You buy. Not, 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 sorry, it's, it's a. Yes, it's, it's very. You go in, you kind of buy. You know. Buy them, I know you buy. So that. You had you that. Protection. That's like. And we're association. Um, so, I just. Unfortunately. You know, a. Obviously, actually, all the public leadership. What is it? And what every town that. Are. That the. I think it's kind of giving you. So if you are. To absorb some of that short term. In a single. Um, because that may, it may suck. To be paid. To beat the, the professional management. And so a lot of those people. That. Doing it for self and their community. Decided to convert it to a full package. Because part of the feat that the professional management. So, you know, it, it's been shown nationally. That sort of. That having a centralized work. Has a. Bring off. Because. The short term. Better. Um, so, you know. When we look at. Workings. Part of it. Actually. And I guess allude to, we are also going to. Need to. Create a connection. That's. And they'll be. Make available to. Uh, after. Those people. The infrastructure. Issue of. But the.
Uh. Yeah. This is really just meant to be a, the applicant can respond. Um, it's not really a question and answer section. Do you want to answer?
Sure. There, there are these. Not going to be. Same on. Right, so. When you didn't take it yourself, it's when you hated something. Purge for the lack of. What was that? Comes on.
Yep. Not a discussion. Is there anything else that you'd like to say? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, do any members of the commission have further questions for town staff or the applicant?
Yes. Um, regarding parking. Um. Does the parking include, so like the parking requirements for, I think you had mentioned it was residential, oh, sorry, um, the transient was like one point one parking spaces per. Bedroom or whatever it was. Does that? Because this is, to me, this is more. It's basically a hotel. Um. And so does that parking consider in employees that have to service this transient? Type of, or the, this type of use?
I, I take it that question's for, for me, the town planner? That's fine. Um, you all may recall that, uh, previously, um, our parking code for hotels, uh, was one parking space per, um, bedroom, and we amended that after study, uh, to one point one, um, such that there's ten percent, um, additional parking provided for the employees, so that, that's how we got there.
It is the same.
And, and again, I did offer that hotel or transient parking kind of as a comparative. Um, it's not how we're necessarily evaluating this property, um, though we can, um, through an amendment, say that that's what we're, how, how the parking should be evaluated for this. But, yeah, that was the attempt. And also, as far as the retail and restaurant spaces, uh, restaurants require one parking space for one hundred and twenty square feet, um, and then the retail would be one space for every four hundred square feet, and that, um, aligns, uh, very generally with many municipalities, and that also is, um, aimed to provide for the employee parking.
So that includes. I actually do have quite a few issues with this, this development. The height at fifty-five feet in general, or for the median, and then the sixty-three for the clock tower, I don't think it's appropriate for this location. I think that's a pretty big difference between that and the underlying zoning district and the surrounding area. Uh, I think that would create a pretty big abnormality unless other areas. You don't need to buy or prove for that. Um. I also do think that it'll increase the amount of lighting as it goes upwards, you can have a much bigger facade. I don't really think that really fits our community values. I don't really think that really fits our community values. Um. Or the, sorry, the, the community character really, uh, for. You know, this town. You know, we're not Breckenridge, we're not, um, Keystone or Copper Mountain. Um. But with that said, so, you know, if we're going down. We're deliberating on right now, right?
Uh, we're just asking questions.
Just questions.
Clarification.
So I'll, I'll stop there. Um, and then we can deliberate later.
Okay.
Pressure for the. Park group. Um, how many town members were surveyed and, and how many businesses were surveyed in, in the two surveys you mentioned?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Ned, this, this is a question for you. Uh. Generally, how would you describe the variances requested for this PUD? To, uh, similar variances that have taken place in the resident, residential high zone?
If any.
Yeah.
Uh, a number. Uh. None are coming to mind. I can't think of any for residential high. Um, as, as you all well know, uh, the residential high, uh, kind of wraps the lake. Um, and it's was, they started building those units in the seventies and eighties and. You know, nothing's turned over.
Yeah. Is there any way to characterize? The typical amount of variance that's allowed in a, in a PUD? Like, is it, you know, what I'm getting at is, is it like ten percent or is it? Sixty percent?
I, I'd say they are all, um, handled on a case by case basis, um, vary site specifically. Um. And, and a evaluation of, of potential impacts. Uh, so I can't, I can't put a number to that, I'm afraid.
Yeah. Are there any guidelines spelled out in the code beyond what? Discussed here?
There are not.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
That's it for me.
I have questions. You're good? Wait, okay. Um, I have a question. So to alleviate some of town council's potential fears of financing issues due to past projects failures, um, do you have a brand that's committed? You don't have to name the brand. Are you in communication with a brand that would be interested in this project?
Cool. Um. I, the rest of mine are just sort of recommendations. Um, I would recommend not relying on the use of public parking within the parameters of your. Uh, PUD and, and build. Um, a lot of businesses do rely on town parking and it's just more. Uh. It's more put on the town to take care of those facilities and maintain them and. Um. It just doesn't go over well with town council. Um, and then I am concerned about the, obviously it's a diagram and it's, it's hard to tell, but the flow of trash and maintenance of that. That area, um, especially in the wintertime when snow and, and ice can really make corridors like that even smaller. Um. If it's possible to make more of a, a larger flow for big trucks and traffic, I think that would be advisable. Um, and I do appreciate your consideration of your neighbors and taking into that consideration. Um. If you do have the ability within your renderings to show what the building will look like from other directions, I think that could help your case as well. Did you have any questions or comments?
Is the, so the dumpster is going to be done on the service lane on the west, is that? Heck. Okay. Right. Turns in and. Right, there's a loading dock or there's a. Got it. But that is where the. Service vehicles, linens, cleaning, delivery of restaurant supplies. Yep. Got it.
Oh.
Sorry.
Sorry. Um. All right. There's no more questions, comments, concerns. We are nearing the end of the public hearing. Before I close the public hearing, I want to. The documents included within the record of, for this public hearing include all materials included in the planning commission packets, any PowerPoint or other presentations given tonight. All written referral and public comments received regarding the application or draft resolution and the town subdivision and zoning ordinances and other applicable regulations. If there's. Is there anything else that we need to include? Should be admitted?
The packet that Mr. Sebal handed you, um, has already been admitted into the evidentiary record.
Okay. Um. Do commissioners believe they have received enough information to make a decision to approve or deny the application tonight? Um. We'll just go one by one.
Yes.
I'm honestly not sure. Like to talk about it.
Okay. Same, I'd like to deliberate more.
One more question. Um, sorry to take you back.
Okay.
I realize that. The design you came up with. Effectively for the economics of this to work. You need a certain minimum square footage of residential and other retail stuff. So if you were to be compelled to lower the height. By one floor. Throughout the property. That would damage the economic, uh, viability of the project. Is that accurate? Right. And. Tell me a little more, so you're, that public works. So again, part of the profits and taxation on this, the intent is to parlay that back into further development in Dylan. Given, given the structure of your. Got it. Got it. It's true. Thank you. Um. I think I've got enough info.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
If you. Here's a negative and here's a negative.
Oh, I, I haven't, I, I have no further questions. Like the delivery. So.
Well, I think we need to move to continue the hearing if you're not ready for that decision.
Yeah, so that is what's available to the commission. And the reason I've, um, that's included in this part of the script is because if you continue prior to closing the public hearing. Um, the town doesn't need to go through, um, an expensive and worse noticing process again. Um, because the members in attendance tonight will hear when that hearing is going to occur, if you were to continue it to a date certain. Um, it would take a majority vote, um, in the affirmative to continue the hearing on a motion of the second.
Okay. So are you a yes or no?
I'm a yes for moving to the decision. But. Sorry.
Yes, you.
Do you want to make a decision?
Yeah, make a decision.
Yeah. Um.
And you can continue after the public hearing is closed, just so you know, but the town will have to go through that noticing procedure again.
Yeah.
So. I mean. It's better than making a decision without all the information. But.
The options are, if you're not a hundred percent sure, you can say no, we can continue. Everybody in here has noticed they don't have to go through the procedures. Make a decision to that.
Quick question on, this is a little bit different from what I'm used to as far as, you know, reviewing this type of application. Um. The summary in the staff report lists these sort of exceptions. Are we approving these exceptions or are we just approving that the application meets?
As is.
As is, that they can change these. At town council.
Uh, so what you are doing would be recommending approval of the application as a whole, which includes requests for exceptions to certain. Um. Certain requirements of the code. And those have been, I think Suzanne, you probably have a good idea of what those are. But, um, yeah, so it's the application as a whole, um, the, the PUD plan set. Um. You would recommend approval to the council, recommend denial, recommend approval conditions, those are your options.
I'm going to say based on this application and, um, what we've heard tonight is I, I don't feel that we have all the information. At this time to make a decision, or I don't have all this, this, um, information. I'm a no.
So anyone is free to make a motion to continue the hearing. Um, and I think that i- if you do so, you need a second and a majority vote, and I would, um, in order to not. Um. In order to not have to notice that you do have to continue to a date certain, so I would recommend the next planning, um, commission meeting, um. Ordinarily, but we're in a special meeting scenario right now, and that meeting would be coming up on the sixth, correct? Um, so. You would have to determine whether that's enough time, um, for everyone to put together, uh, additional information that's needed, and I would suggest that you very much that you provide some guidance on what you need. Um. And, or you could determine a date that you're all available sometime in March, um, that's a little bit further to permit more time for that, so. Um, that would be my advice, um, but it would take a, an approved motion to continue.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Or motion to continue the hearing? Do I have a second?
So, um, one thing is there needs to be a date certain.
Oh, we want to discuss a date?
Um, I'm available the sixth. I don't know if it's enough time for Ted, for Ned.
I, I would need to understand, um, at this juncture, exactly what you all are, are looking for, you know, if, if it's, for instance, the traffic study, I can't speak to that, that consultant. Um. And I, I just, I know they were still doing traffic counts and things like that. I, I don't know where they are in process, so. Um, but. From my point of view, I could be. Potentially ready.
Are we allowed to, to talk right now about the information that we feel like we would need smart? There is information that comes to mind to me that would help me make a better decision, but I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to have that. Can we submit it to Ned?
Well, I.
Side of this.
Well, I think it, it's absolutely a good time to have that discussion. I think you want to have that so that the applicant can hear and so that the town staff and members of the public can hear as well. Um, and also to build out the hearing record. Why you're, uh, continuing the hearing if that's what you decide to do. Um, so I think have that discussion and then, um, you know, scheduling is going to be potentially tricky here, so what I would recommend is if there is going to be a motion to continue. Um. You move to continue the hearing contingent upon, uh, a further motion, uh, to determine a date certain, that way you know whether it's going to be continued or not, um, before you decide to whip out your calendars. Yeah, but certainly recommend having the discussion of what information, further information you might need first.
Yeah, the, the traffic study comes to mind. I, I also. I don't feel like I have a good understanding about whether or not the variances requested in the PUD are standard or abnormal. And I think that's a pretty critical piece of information that informs the rest of the discussion, and without knowing that, then we can't really come to an informed decision.
Also, maybe they're called variances for a reason, right? They vary.
Yeah.
And they vary in the code and they'll vary. You know, from project to project.
Sure, sure, but like. So I, I'd be helpful to have an understanding of what is typical and what is. You don't think so?
And I just don't think there's a project around here that, you know, Nate and Ned's already talked to us, but on a case by case basis.
We can't average it or something like that. It seems like a.
Or is there a limit?
Small math problem.
Variations.
I, I, may I? Um, I, I was asked if I could think of one, um. In the RH zone, and I, and I was unable to, um, and then if I was able to put a percentage of deviation from the code, and that, that challenged me as well.
Yeah.
Um, I can tell you that, um, we've had a number of, of PUDs. Um, uh, the Homewood Suites, for instance, um, did, uh, petition for additional height and setbacks. Um, they are built almost immediately on their western lot line, for instance, so. Um. In that case, there was, there was height and, um, a setback issue. Um, as far as the Uptown Two Forty Perspective Project, which we hope will, will resume. Um. They had additional height as part of their request. Um. That's what comes to mind there. Um. And they had some parking, some offsite commercial parking that they, um, requested.
That, yeah, that, that, and I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, right, but like I. Were they five percent or were they fifty percent, right, like that? I thi- I think that, that kind of degree of difference really does matter.
Uh, understood, and I don't have that number right in front of me, but.
Absolutely.
Let, let's, let's be fair with the math. Um, it's thirty-five plus eight and it's fifty plus eight that we're talking about. We can't compare thirty-five to fifty-eight and then try to give the math here because that's, that's not, um, genuine mathematics. Um, but yeah, I can, a- as part of the continuance, if, if that's the direction we go, I can certainly prepare some comparables along those lines.
I would agree that it's, 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 I'm, I'm trying to figure out what are, how are. These impacts of increasing height and having, you know, taking away any long-term residential, how are those impacts being mitigated? You know, how is that? You know, there's a plaza. But I, I. It's not really much of a public, I mean, it's a little bit of a public benefit. There is some, you know, the, the, you know, the applicant has agreed to, or shift the, um. The view over a little bit or the setbacks from that area over, um, some, but. Um. I think there's a lot of impacts that, that are, that are affecting this by allowing some of these variances, and I'm trying to grasp. How much is too much? Um. That's where I'm going with this. Um.
I, I think, uh, just based on what I'm hearing right now, um, some of the questions are kind of surrounding deliberations, right? Um, so, so maybe it would be appropriate for the commission to close a public hearing and go into deliberations, and then should you decide to continue it, we'll, we'll, of course, have to read notice. Um, but, you know, I think you, you really are, in essence, getting into deliberations and, and that's, that's fine and appropriate. It's just that, I think, uh, you can always continue the, the hearing. Um. And during deliberations. You so choose.
Yeah, I'm, my biggest concern is the additional illumination. I know we have town code and criteria around. Um, sort of timelines and hours of operation. Um. But it, you know, it is a significant increase to the. Residential. You know, addition to that area that you can't really put timelines on for when people turn their lights off if they are living there, um, whether short term or long term. Um. And I just don't know if I saw that because I know we require that sort of study for, obviously it's in the signed plan. But. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yes, but. And that's what that would be. Yes, but. If we do. Identify.
Because that would.
Yeah, so.
As part of the process.
Well, so you would be recommending some conditions of approval to the council as a condition of your recommendation, in essence. And, um, you know, it's very common of the planning commission and the town council to approve applications on the condition that. Um, it come back to one of those bodies to say, uh, a, say a traffic study, for example, that's very common. Um, and the council could even approve on the condition that a traffic study be reviewed and approved by the town engineer, for example. Um. Or, um, illumination plan, which the applicant has promised, um, or review and approval, um, by a certain time. So these are, these are all things, some of these things are already in the conditions of approval, if you take a look at the resolution. So that's another way to, um, get to a, a similar result, right? And if, if you have, if you have requests, specific requests from, for information right now that you still feel you are lacking, that you don't feel can be addressed through a condition of approval like that, um, as, um, Mr. Port mentioned, you know, technically you can still ask those questions of the applicant or the town planner.
Who would make those conditions?
I, I think we should move into deliberation.
Yeah, yeah, if that's, if that's the case, um, I would ask the chair to state the time and, um, officially close the public hearing if, if those, you are ready to move on.
Okay. Um, so with nothing else said, it is eight thirty-six PM, and I will now close the public hearing. Who would like to begin commissioner deliberations?
So there is a checklist at the end of, uh, the script that's before you, um, and it begins on page five. And these are the criteria by which you need to make your recommendation tonight. So they're, they're framed as questions, um, but the idea is to get you to start talking about the specific criteria, as it relates only to the testimony and evidence that you've received this evening.
Do you want me to read all this?
Uh, yeah, I think you should go through them one by one.
Okay. Code Criteria Checklist. Pursuant to DMC and sixteen dash eight dash one thirty D one, a recommendation of approval by the planning commission requires findings on each of the following questions. You may ask the town planner for factual information pertaining to each of the required findings, and may ask the commissioner's attorney for legal advice, e.g., what does the code mean when it references quote-unquote benefits? Chair to add check when each item is addressed. Question one. Is the development process proposed in the PUD development plan in substantial conformance with the comprehensive plan?
So, just, just to be clear, you are, um, evidence that's already been submitted into the, um, evidentiary record, um, you are allowed to refer back to that, so if you'd like to refer to any slides that Ned or the applicant prepared, you, you can certainly for those to be placed back up there, I do believe there was a slide on the comprehensive plan in Ned's presentation.
I mean, we're all pretty familiar with it, um, I would say as far as my, um, interpretation of the comprehensive plan, that this, this is-
substantially conform.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yes.
Easy.
I believe it is, right?
Yeah.
You've got the, the mountain, that's, you know, the mountain-like aesthetic, materials they've chosen are appropriate. Again, many of the things are outworn, so.
I agree, I think it's hundred percent.
I would disagree. Um, but I need to kind of refresh myself on all the slides, I think Ned had up. If you guys wanna continue, I'm gonna look up.
I'll, uh, no. I think it's within the, it's the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Forty-nine.
We can come back.
Yeah, you can come back to any of these two.
Will the development proposed in the PUD development plan have an adverse impact on the surrounding area? I would argue that any development will have a impact on, I don't know if it's adverse, but on the surrounding area.
I think it's hard to answer that question of the traffic study, that's like one of the big ones.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you're doing a development of this size, you don't plan on it not being successful.
Yeah. I think that's right. And it doesn't seem like, there's a lot of ways to read that adverse impact, it doesn't seem to me like it has potential adverse impact on the overall character of the area. Yes, it's a hotel, it's in an area with a lot of other hotel, like hotel-type buildings, literally replacing a hotel. But I, and I don't, I think that I assume the traffic, there'll be a plan to mitigate the traffic impacts, but I'd like to actually see it, or for the point that you made, put some language in, but there already is language, maybe we add to it, or change it, but like, that one I think is a little bit hard for me to judge, but I think.
Yeah, I think traffic is one, and then the other big one is Lake Cliff and the potential view, again, infringing on their views of the mountain. You know, again, Ned provided a photo. You know, but again, certainly, I think having a better sense of, you know, for those current homeowners to the east, wha- what is this gonna really do to their view? I don't think it's gonna do much at all in terms of seeing the lake, but it certainly has a strong possibility of infringing on the view of the mountain and.
And that's where we get to in my mind, that, the regularity of the variance that we're allowed, right? Because if it's a regular variance, then, you know, yes, it may infringe on their view, but that's what the code is, is that like playing out.
If you could always build a building that big.
Sure.
It was likely to happen at some point.
Right.
Agree.
Thank, it probably has a positive impact on surrounding areas. Like anybody who owns property near there, their property value is gonna go up. Like it's good for other businesses that already exist. It is.
Okay. Is the development proposed in the PUD development plan compatible with the scale, intensity, and type of land uses located on adjacent property? Would not, yeah, would no.
I think that also hinges, uh, PUD variance, I mean, I know I'm writing, there's a lot, but writing on that for me personally, but, I think if it's, if it's in conformity with how those are typically written, yeah, I think it's.
Yeah. I don't, yeah. I don't know if that's fair, because the scale and intensity of the buildings that are around it were built a long time ago. It's other than the post office, which is honestly pretty comparable scale-wise. Do the benefits proposed in the application offset the proposed exceptions to the underlying residential high RH zoning district and the division subdivision regulations? And are such exceptions in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare? You guys want Ned to talk about exceptions?
Well, again, the five exceptions were outlined in Ned's summary. It's six percent retail, two parking spaces short of what the official guideline would be. You know, there's some comment on the setbacks, but as I now understand that now, to me, there's not a setback variance really being asked for here. The increase at the building height is significant, and then a PUD sign plan. Again, those are the five, those are the five exceptions, if you would.
And then the other exception, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Ned, this might be a question for you as well, is, you know, the underli- underlying residential high is for residential, this isn't residential, this to, this to me is, you know, this.
It's, it's interesting work.
It's an interesting workaround on, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to having, you know, branded residences, I mean, I think there could be a, you know, mixed use, I think is a, maybe a great place or a great use for some of that, but I think the scale of it is, using all the density specifically, or like using pretty much the majority of the density, packing it with, you know, building it out to, you know, its maximum size constraints, with two hundred units. Knowing that that completely takes away any sort of opportunity for long-term rental, long-term residence. Th- th- this isn't for locals, this is for tourists. So I, that, that is my really big concern on this one, it, the height is one, of course, but then, I don't know what the, what are the, I don't really see huge benefits to this massive structure in not having any sort of, like, even, you know, workforce housing or some long-term residences that are available. I, I don't, I'm struggling with seeing benefits for.
We know how many re- long-term residences are on the land today. But we know there was a restaurant, now there was a hotel,
Um, and then, uh, uh, ori- no. You know, originally there was a caretaker's unit, I, I would have to defer to the, the property owner if that's still being used by a caretaker, but no, it was all transient, uh, hotel use.
Yeah, but the opportunity for long-term rental was there, and this will completely take that. So that's kind of, I mean, you're basically taking the density that's available for long-term rental and using for, uh, tourist services. Right, well, you're not taking anything away, you're just not losing anything at the moment.
Also, the, the-
Could be accretive.
Yeah, and the, and the, the town, um, zoning code specifically calls out hotels as a conditional use allowed.
In residential high, does it?
Yeah, like specifically.
But I mean, ultimately, we've established it's not a hotel. It may look like one, but these are deeded properties.
Sure, and the comparison has been made, I think, somewhat accurately, that this is effectively a hotel, and my point would be that that doesn't matter based on how the code is written.
So are we going to have those kind of machination arguments and potentially take a large tax revenue, I mean, this is political, right? To take a large opportunity for tax revenue for the town, because we're not gonna make that art, that this is residential, that's, that's why this is being done, that's what Mr. Port was explaining to us.
I, I think, um, I think we're talking past each other, I don't think it matters. Like, I don't think it matters if it's a hotel, or if it's short-term rentals, or if it's long-term, it's allowed by the code, that's what matters. I think.
Yeah, I think that obviously with increased density in this area, there will, more public health comments will come up, safety and welfare will come up, but I think that the benefits outweigh the, the potential of things going wrong. We can't foresee and won't foresee. Are streets proposed within the PUD area adequate to support the traffic anticipated to be generated by the development? I would say no, that intersection is a mess. That hallway stop is not, or, you know, whatever. It's, um, I foresee that being an issue because it's an issue now. It could be fixed with some alternative traffic, you know, get exiting that area after a big concert, it takes, takes a while.
Okay, so we wanna, so we can come back to that and say, well, okay, that's condition is approval based on that.
And, and it, it already is conditioned, right? I, well, I'm like double checking that, but, but we said that it already is.
I think it is already in the, I, I need to double check, but we'll certainly make sure of that.
I think the condition said submission, but not approval.
Uh, it's, it looks like it's K, applicant shall submit final site plan, landscape plan, site lighting plans, construction stormwater, civil and right-of-way construction plans. I don't. I don't know if that qualifies.
Let's see where it is, um, which, which condition did you say it was?
Uh, I think maybe K, but I don't-
Oh, I see it.
Uh, yeah, so it does say, final site plan, landscape plans, lighting plans, construction, store management, civil and right-of-way construction plans to the town engineer for approval. See if there's a traffic.
I just searched it, there's not.
Okay. So, yeah, so a traffic plan would have to be added as a condition of approval, um, when the time comes, if that's the, uh, commission's desire.
Seems like that's a smart change.
Will the development proposed in the application overload streets outside the PUD area? Same as above. TBD. Are the utility and drainage facilities proposed in the application adequate for the population densities and type of development proposed, such as the development will not create a drainage or pollution problem? No?
Yes, we agree with that. Yes.
I think yes, we're good.
Yeah. We wouldn't, this wouldn't move forward if they didn't met that criteria, right?
We have coordinated with them on how to, um, discharge, um, storm water from the site and where that needs to take place in lodge poles, so that it does not overwhelm any other storm drainage infrastructure. So we have a preliminary civil plan, that, that aims to that, and, and they're continuing to work on that as, as Mr. Port has stated.
Will the timing of utility and drainage facility installation be closely coordinated with development construction, such as the installation will not create an additional hardship on residents either within or outside the PUD area? I think it's construction, I think it always does, but, yeah, it's standard.
Or piece off, man, we'll make that determination period.
Just so you know, the development agreement, should this get approved at a council stage, will certainly address that type of timing, and, um, you know, we, they are required, following that type of approval, to work closely with the town staff and particularly the town engineer to ensure that all of that goes.
Will the proposed density of the development proposed in the application result in the inability on the part of the town or utility providers to provide public utilities or services to the project?
No. Summary, sounds like we've got Van O L is available. Sounds like to me it's all there, Excel's got access for gas, they got access for electricity, got the water ironed out.
Communication.
Um, we'll circle back to the first question. Is the development proposed in the PUD development plan in substantial conformance with the comprehensive plan? I'm looking through it. Pretty long.
Yeah, I know.
Um, is there anything about it that you don't think can- necessary? And it was really after looking at the criteria, when we go back to this list here, it's really, it's not so much the comprehensive plan, it's the, is the development proposed in the PUD development plan compatible with scale, intensity, and type of land uses, and do the benefits proposed offset the proposed exceptions? I, I, I don't think it does. I don't think it's compatible with scale, it's, this is huge when you compare it to some of the other buildings in town, and again, I'm not opposed to, like, development, um, this is, but I would agree that the scale is, is, is not compatible with the town of Dillon. Do you think it's not compatible with the way the town is currently, or the way that the town could potentially be? Could, could potentially be. I still think it's like, I agree, some of these buildings that are like next to, some of these old buildings built in the seventies, oh, might could be updated, sure, but the, I, 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 I imagine a town of Dillon where you have, you know, you don't have the, I mean, this is almost, this is probably a mid-rise building, it's not real, it's not high-rise, but it's not, you know, this is, this is five stories. I don't, I, I drove through Dillon, there is nothing that is more than four stories. It is that I could see. So when I drove past the, the new Homewood Suites, that's four stories, as you drive around, you have photos of it, but either way, the buildings surrounding it, they're all about four stories that I could tell, so maybe there's others, I'm not sure. The buildings surrounding it, they're all about four stories that I could tell. So maybe there's others, I'm not sure. I don't mean to speculate on that. But I imagine more of a sort of, I mean, this is my perception is that it's smaller scale, broken up buildings. I do appreciate that there's some, you know, the facade in the front of the, of the, you know, facing the Dillon or facing Lake Dillon, it's kind of broken in where that sort of pool area is. But the building itself, it, it reminds me of being in Vale. Sort of, the Solaris in a way, or not the Solaris, the, um anyways. I don't, the scale of this is a bit large. I also, I don't really love the roof line. It's, it's flat. And it just continues to be flat. There's not a lot of projecting towers or variation in that, you know, roof line to kind of give it some visual interest. I'm not saying it's terrible, of course, but it's, it could have some more visual interest. And because it's so tall, I understand that that flat roof is kind of, as it's tapered down, it kind of, you're not really seeing a whole lot of the top. But that's kind of the problem, is that it's just a very I think it's going to be a pretty big facade still. In a large building that just doesn't fit these kind of smaller little and I don't know if there's a way to do that and still keep your density so you can have those two hundred units. I don't like the height and I, yeah, the scale of it, it, it doesn't fit. That is my thought.
I think that's kind of the point.
Sure.
If, if I may, I, I'm just giving some more thought to the height and, and, and you did state that you drove around. We do have a project that has been approved at, at the Uptown Two Forty site. It is over height, it is a five-story structure. I, I just mentioned the relative heights that I provided you all, just to kind of give you a feel for what it might feel like. At the corner of Lake Dillon Drive and Buffalo Street at the, kind of where the, what the maximum height would be relative to the building. Or maybe it wraps down Buffalo a little bit, but as I recall, that, that height, relative height was something along the lines of seventy-eight feet. And what we're talking about here is more in the, the realm of fifty or less. So I think that there is a vision for the town to change somewhat. Whether right or wrong, but that, that is, you know, that was a previous council, previous planning commission felt that, that building was appropriate, really liked that architecture. And, you know, the town remains hopeful that we get that, that project. I don't know if you drove all the way down to the end of, of West Levante Street, but I can tell you the point or the point at Lake Dillon or that condominium on the far west end. To me, off of, of West Levante Street, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it feels very massive, very blocky. And and I, you know, just, just so you're considering ki- kind of some of what is, is out there, I just wanted to share some of that with you.
Yeah, that one down here, yeah, that one's, right, and I would agree. And, and yeah, and to be honest, those, those areas kind of more up on the hill seem more appropriate for a higher height. As we get closer to the lake. I, I just don't, I don't like it.
Conditions for approval. For assistance on adding conditions of approval to the resolution, ask the attorney.
Well, so far, we have one additional condition that's been discussed and that has to do with requiring that the applicant submit a traffic study and circulation plan for review and approval. I, my recommendation would be by the town engineer. And typically what we do is we add that approval must come before the issuance of the building permit. Is that right, Ned? Or is there, there another time that it should come?
Prior to.
I think it'd be prior to the development permit.
Yeah, prior to the issuance of the development permit. So that makes sense. So there's that, and I certainly don't want to cut the commissioner's deliberations short if you guys still wanted to discuss things, but if, if you'd like to move on to discussing the conditions with reference to what your concerns are about it, you certainly can do that, so. I'd encourage you to look at what's already in the resolution itself and then you can refer back to this page seven, it looks like, of the of the script that's been prepared for other appropriate conditions as well. Really, conditions just need to reasonably relate to the impacts, the anticipated impacts of the development. So this, the code lists and the script lists some and some of what that might include, but it's not limited to those items that are listed on page seven. You can, as long as it reasonably relates to the impacts of the development. You're okay to add that as a condition.
Does the commission agree with the conditions of approval recommended in the draft resolution? Could we extend that question to include adding in our recommendation for the traffic study?
Yep.
So I think there were two things that were discussed, that my traffic study plus you guys wanted by sentence, right?
Oh, yes, I think that would be bicycle parking, yeah.
So outside of that, I'm keeping a tally here, outside of that, I don't think there was anything other than objections to the height that we had, other than a trick, because that we could include in a conditional. Anything else you guys want to add after reading this?
Yeah, and that, and that, I'll just say with regard to bicycle parking, that is a, a condition that you could relate to the impacts of the development in that they're going to be, you know, maybe a minor parking shortage. And just overall, the, the traffic impacts could be lessened by bicycle parking. I would just encourage you to, you know, it, it might not be that effective of a condition if you don't put a number on it, but that might be hard to do at this point. So I would just say, give it some, some sort of standard, like appropriate to the size and scale of the development with reference to parking or something like that. Just to make it so that the applicant can reasonably follow that and the town can.
Can we make a recommendation that the, with the application, they consider looking into bike parking? Alternatives or methods, I mean, store, bike storage?
That wouldn't really do anything. Nick's trying to tell us, gotta give them something to hang their hat on, the perspective part, right?
Right.
So we're not going to set an exact number for that, but you use enough lawful words to get the point across and then that also leaves enough for the town council to then look at this, because I mean, I, I get you know, we've got to take into account all these different aspects related to whether or not it fits a comprehensive plan stuff, I think we've gotten too far afield again with them, like emotional evaluation of what this is. So it's like, we need to give them something to hang their hats on, respect for the bike parking, we're going to ask them to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not in favor. I'm not in favor of taking away parking, but I'm in favor of it works within the landscape to act. You recommend that, look into that?
So, can I make a recommendation that? Where, where's everybody else at right now?
I think bike parking is a good idea.
Yes, to bike parking.
Yeah.
Okay, so for
Yeah, just add some racks, some green, in the green space there.
Add bicycle parking appropriate to the size and scale of the project.
Yeah.
Vehicular parking exists based on the PUDs at, at the time.
Okay. Got all that?
I, I mean, I've, I've been ready to make the decision in the last hour.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we agree that the conditions of approval recommended in the draft resolution? With the extension of the, or the addition of the traffic study and the bike parking?
Done our deliberation, we need to put it through a vote and the you know, majority, majority reigns as to whether or not we want to get this thing through and then set the town council. That's, that's our, that's our task. We're not, we're not going to figure this whole thing out by ourselves, it's just not. We're not in charge of that.
Is there any issue with limiting, so right now the height is at fifty-five, I know I keep bringing this up, but this is important to me. Limiting the height, so I noticing the CA zone district stretches back directly behind it where the, the post office is all the way straight up. And that is fifty feet, right?
It, it's fifty feet plus.
Plus eight, plus eight or whatever.
Uh, with two PUDs in there with heights in excess of that.
And those are up higher along Wheel and Drive, closer to Highway Six?
Yes.
My thought is to limit the height, I don't know how much this is going to change things, but text or creative, uh, limiting the height to that fifty to match the CA zone district. So it's, so it's still an exception to the RH zone district, along with that eight feet. That is my thought.
I think we could say that no further variants will be allowed, but if it's in accordance with how the town measures height.
I don't, I wouldn't want to, I don't want to place any additional height restriction on it. I want to understand if the height restriction that there, height variance they're asking for is is reasonable within the bounds of what we normally issue for a variance. I think there are a lot written. I think that's important. If it's wildly out of line with what the town typically allows for a variance, then that's a problem. If it's in line with what the town typically allows, then I think it meets the code and you've addressed all the other concerns and that we've done our job.
But we don't really know that.
I know, but I think we need to know. I don't think we can, I don't think we're getting good conscience. I can't make, I can't just make a decision without.
That's, yeah.
Ultimately, town, town staff recommends approval of this as written, right Ned? Correct?
Yes.
Ultimately, say town has, is correct and everything, but the research to me has been done, we can make the decision. Ultimately, the worst concerns of whether or not it's going to block somebody's view is something the town council decide. Whether or not it meets some sort of arbitrary average for projects that don't even, aren't even similar to what we're talking about today. It, it's, it's too abfervesting to me, I don't like it.
I think that's wildly mischaracterized, right? Super similar projects and an average gives us additional information. The two hotels that just went in that have like variants that we don't know the answer to, how much they deviate from the existing code, like why?
I, 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 I'm working on trying to get you that information. I really don't want to give you the wrong information.
Right, right.
So are we going to continue this until we can get that information?
Why, I think we should take a vote. I don't want to, that's not my decision to make. That's, that's our decision to make as a group.
I can offer to you that the Homewood Suites is zoned commercial. The maximum building height in the commercial zone district is forty feet. They were afforded the, the fifty plus eight feet through their PUD and, and if I recall, they may have been a little bit in excess of that fifty plus eight. I just don't have those numbers right in front of me.
I, I, I get that.
And what's the sample size for similar projects then? Maybe two?
Right.
Okay. So statistically not significant as far as I'm concerned.
A hundred percent, but.
So you want, any, anytime you're going to do statistical analysis, you want to, you want, you want sample size of two.
Trust me, I understand statistics, but it's better, it's better than, it's better than no information.
Uh, the, the Dillon Medical Center also deviated from the height and that was because of that depressed area made up greater than fifty percent. So it, it, it created some issues on how we calculated the, the height as I recall, so there was some some issue with the, the maximum height of that building as well in the mixed-use zone district.
What about Vale Health?
That's what I'm referring to.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Do we feel like we have all the information we need to make the decision?
So anyone is free to make any sort of motion, lawful motion. And the ones that I see available are motions to approve the resolution, which includes conditions. Motion to approve the resolution with the additional conditions that I would be happy to read my scribbled notes on so that the commission can more easily make that motion. And then denial is an option based on the code criteria. And then if you find that the code criteria supports denial, I should say, and same with approval. And then continuance. And I can certainly help with any of those motions that the commission would like, but any of you are free.
I move that we approve resolution PZ number zero one twenty-four, series of twenty twenty-four as presented with the addition of traffic study and the bike racks as we discussed.
And would you allow me to add to that motion just to give specific language for those conditions? Okay, okay. So the applicant shall submit a traffic study and circulation plan for review and approval by the town engineer prior to the issuance of a development permit. Um, and the second with regard to bicycle parking is that the applicant shall revise the PUD development plan to provide onsite bicycle parking as appropriate. As the council finds appropriate, since you're making the recommendation for the council, finds appropriate to the size and scale of the development and with reference to vehicular parking spaces provided on site. That sound right? Sorry, I talked in the middle of it. Okay, um, so Tim, all I need you to do is to accept that as part of your motion.
Accept that as part of my emotion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, no.
No.
She carries.
Motion passes. Okay, so, um, so I will tell you, I just want to give everyone in the room a, a brief procedural update on what's going to happen next. So this was a recommendation to the council. And the council can take that recommendation. And it, it doesn't have to take the recommendation, it can decide the application on the merits when it, when it reaches the council level. But that council, the hearing will be scheduled at the council level and the public will receive notice as it did for this hearing. And everyone is welcome to attend and let your views be known at that hearing as well. So did I miss anything on that? Advancement?
No, I'll have to do some looking and check with the council's schedule as to when that hearing will be scheduled, so I don't have that date certain at this point.
This will go through to council as three yeses and two noes, so they will see that full vote.
Well, they will, they will see the resolution that the commission approved by majority vote. They will not have specific, we will tell them if they ask, but they will not have specific information as to.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there anything else on the agenda?
I mean, technically there is, but if we, it's at nine fifteen, so if we want to adjourn, I don't know if you want to go over anything. All right, uh, well, we will move past other business and we will adjourn officially at nine fifteen on February first, twenty twenty-four.